All right. Okay. The public hearing before the Sawyer County Board of Appeals was served by call to order at five o'clock. Sawyer County Courthouse, Hayward, Wisconsin. President on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Laura Russ, Steve Kelsey, Gordon Christians and Dee Doblis from the zoning office. Jay Kozowski and Kathy Marks, also present attorney TJ Duffy. Those persons desiring to give pertinent testimony will be afforded to the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order, reading up the application, submission of the file to the board. Applicant statements and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application. Statements from persons and objection to the application, rebuttal as permitted by the board. And decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agreed by a decision of the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court. Within thirty days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a class two notice. In accordance with chapter nine eighty-five. Wisconsin statutes in the Sawyer County Record and the Sawyer County Gazette. The public hearing will follow this order, variance, application, new business and adjournment. Okay, did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes of our July? Eighteenth meeting?
Yes.
Is there any questions, answers, changes, deletions? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion by Russ, second by Kelsey. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, I think we're saying aye. Aye. All those same sign, motion approved by aye, zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two variance applications this evening, first is the public here in the town of Bass Lake, variance number twenty-three dash zero zero five. Michael Savitsky, Grindstone Heights, lots nine through eleven, block four. Tax ID one one three nine, it is zero point five six two total acres on residential recreational one. Application is the request of a construction of a two-story twenty-four by fifty, which is twenty-eight by fifty-two with Eves dwelling. Attached onto an existing twenty-four by twenty-four, which is twenty-eight by twenty-eight with Eves garage. The proposed addition is to be located two feet to the platted undeveloped town road right of way. And twenty-seven feet at the closest point of a non-navigable wetland. Variance is requested as section four point two parent, four point two-one parent three. Of the Sawyer County zoning ordinance, which would require the prior granting of a variance for any structure located closer than sixty-three feet. To the centerline of a town road or thirty feet from the right of way line. And section six point one of the Sawyer County Shoreline Wetland Protection Ordinance. Which require the prior granting of a variance for any structure closer than forty feet to a non-navigable wetland. As part of the staff report, an onsite inspection was conducted by Pat Brown on July sixth of this year. At time of onsite, a proposed building location was laid out on the property. For a twenty-four by fifty, which is a twenty-eight by fifty-two with Eves, two-story dwelling. The building footprint was set in such a way that would be in line with the existing garage. A previous inspection was conducted on the property on July seventeenth of two thousand and twenty. At that time, an expansion area was laid out without knowing the true right of way line. It would still require a wetland variance. In nineteen ninety, the property was granted a land use permit to build the twenty-four by twenty-four garage. And a detached twenty-four by thirty building. The dwelling wasn't built because of the property layout and location between wetlands and navigable water. This area is the only area the applicant could build and would not bring a new building closer to the ordinary high watermark of Grindstone Lake. This portion of Poplar Road is a platted town road. However, it is undeveloped and dead ends approximately one hundred and thirty-five feet past the existing garage. The public would still have the ability to traverse the public right of way. Without obtaining this variance, the only option would be do vertical expansion on the existing garage. As per motion of the town board. Motion was approved, Justin Hall, chairman, Marshall Savitsky supervisor, Dave Albright supervisor, Don Adams supervisor, James Evans supervisor. Um, as per the motion of the town board, unique property limitations, undeveloped town road on paper. Which the town would not develop due that eighty percent of the road is through a county wetland. There is no harm to public interest as only um, the usable part of road access is on the applicant's property. There is unnecessary hardship is due to the parcel size by only allowing expansion of the current structure. With a variance to a road and wetland setback. The town of Bass Lake approves dependent upon DNR approval, signed Tammy Brown Town Clerk. There were six additional notification letters sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of the. Subject variance request, one was returned with no objections. My name is Howard Dalby, the adjacent owner to Mr. Savitsky. I have no issues in support the granting of Mr. Savitsky's request of the variance. From correspondence back from DNR. As per the Savitsky variance, the department has no statutory jurisdiction to approve the wetland setback relief as requested. The board has to apply the statutory criteria to request. To the request to determine whether the applicant has been able to meet all the standards. As part of that. They have no statutory jurisdiction to approve wetland setbacks and then wetland setbacks are ultimately. Determined by individual counties, Sawyer County themselves, we have a forty-foot non-navigable wetland setback. And that is one of the more restrictive setbacks to wetlands as to the adjacent counties within our area. The majority of them have only a twenty-five foot setback, that is all.
Any questions? All right, are the Savitskis here or someone to speak on their behalf?
You are here.
Step up to the microphone and state your name, sir.
My name is Michael Louis Savitsky. Um, I've got a little history in the area, my dad was born up here. I bought the lot from an uncle thirty-nine years ago. Uh, at one point in time, we were somewhat approved for the extra addition. Also, uh, the economy and all these things had happened, children. And now we're finally old enough and retired and we'd like to move up here. A little more livable area than a garage. And so that would be why we're asking for the variance, one of the reasons. Outside of that, do you have any questions for me?
Um, well, I visited the property yesterday.
Okay.
And um. It appears as though. What I'm going to call behind the garage. There's a pad, a gravel pad, raised pad. Um, that was potentially going to be where.
Right.
A structure was going to be located.
Right.
Is that, that's no longer the case?
That is where the structure will be. If you were there, there was a couple stakes you might have noticed.
Yep.
Those are the corners. To the backside. Uh, two and a half years ago, we started with Pat Brown. We've made all the setbacks off the lake, we've been able to do all that. And then we ran into a snafu. With uh. Property lines and easements. Uh, and that's why we're here. So we were potentially going to start this project like three months ago. Uh, and then finding out that there was issues, so uh, that was when we moved forward. With the variance. To complete the structure so that we can have a place.
The elevated. Prepared area that I noticed didn't attach to the existing garage.
No, no, it's, it needs to be.
Okay, so there's going to be some additional.
They're going to need to do the whole construction.
Okay.
Is who we've got hired to do the project. And they're, they will have to do a little site work, not much. A foot here probably and add another six inches here and that kind of stuff, but the site is pretty ready. I mean, quite honestly, there'll be, it's been waiting for this project. Um, and then we didn't find out we had issues until three months ago. Hence the reason we're here today.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Oh, another question.
Sure.
Um, to the southeast. It appears there's kind of a peninsula. Peninsula, I don't want to call it that, but a little more distance between Poplar Avenue and the lake as you get to the east. Of the pad.
Yeah, on the map, right, yep, that little tweak.
Yeah, it kind of, it, it turns and goes to the lake, gets a little deeper, it looks like. Was there any investigation on your part of setbacks further from the garage?
We get closer to the lake if we go that direction. If I'm not, if I'm understanding you properly.
Okay. It appears as though that would get further.
Oh, okay, so that's where it's going to be, where you're asking.
Yeah, you went toward the southeast corner there.
Right, so the building there, it's really, it's going to be adjacent right to the building.
Mm-hmm. If you came down toward the, in that area. It appears that there's a lot, a little more lot width from the lake.
Right, but then we get closer to wetlands again. So we started coaching on something we probably don't want to. I mean, this is the least, it's literally the corner of the building. Is the only thing that's that close to the wetlands. Um, after, once the corner, it goes away. And the, and the wetlands aren't very wet in that area there, it's not like boggy, it's just. Uh. Alder brush and stuff in there.
Yeah, we'll just make a clarification there, yes, it does get a little bit further away from the main. Body of, of grindstone when you get further to the east, but you are actually getting closer to the wetland, that wetland boundary is actually like right here. You can see where that dock starts there, that would be the wetland boundary, so even if you came down to here. Uh, you would actually be coming closer to the wetlands than you would be for an addition on to the existing.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak in opposition of the application? Hearing none this decision by the, or discussion by the board? And Jay, is this? More or less of an addition than what was previously approved on a couple of years ago?
Yeah, so the previous variance. Uh, was approved in nineteen ninety and that was for an attached twenty-four by thirty dwelling. The request we have here today is for a twenty-four by fifty dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty foot. Twenty-four by thirty would have been. A few feet further from Poplar Avenue regularly, it looks like.
Yes, it would, the, the further to the east you get, the closer this is coming to um, the town right of way. Um, as per the staff report provided by Pat Brown, though, it is the same distance away as to the non-navigable wetland. As to where the garage is located, so the, the proposal is not coming closer to any wetlands. But it's still an expansion of the footprint, so that still is part of the variance request.
What type of a septic?
Holding tank.
Holding tank?
They're all in the holding. There's wells, there's everything behind it.
Was that put in for this project or for the former project?
For this, oh no, originally in ninety.
Can you step to the mic, please, thank you.
Originally in ninety, uh, there was a holding tank installed. Uh, Ronald Spreckles had done it. And then we had the well put in, I suppose shortly after.
Is there any finished living space inside the garage?
It's, it's, it's a little bit.
But I saw there's an air conditioner.
Yeah, 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 it's.
Unusual for garage.
Right, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's not very large.
Kitchen, bathroom, anything like that in there?
Well, there's a bathroom in there, yes.
Yeah, so that previous nineteen ninety variance, you know, was allowed for the garage and the dwelling. Um, and for, you know, the, the reasons explained by the applicant, the dwelling was never, you know, further built. And they had just built the garage and, you know, over time, you know, tried to convert that into habitable space, which. I don't have necessarily an issue with that because it's still less than what was initially approved as part of the nineteen ninety variance.
How did the survey, the new survey?
Uh, starting of the construction. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, because we had, we had tried to look for potential buildable area using our two hundred square foot allowance, no closer to the water inside of seventy-five feet from the lake. Um, but then when we started looking at an addition on to this. Uh, they would have had to stay eight point zero two feet away from the right of way of Poplar. And that's where kind of we prompted that we're going to need a survey on this. Because unless you were to step this thing back, I don't know if you can see my mouse on the screen, unless you were to step this back. And come out with a narrow skinny addition here. You know, that area right there wouldn't work because it was coming closer to the right of way. Uh, furthermore, if it's not the forty feet from the wetland, it still would have required a variance anyway, so. There was some definitely unique building design in there that would have had to been made in order to meet compliance setbacks, so there again is why the. Uh, request for variances in front of you.
It's a long lot, not very deep and it's pretty tough to. To fit it on there and hence the reason we're here. But we think it's important, very important to stay back from the lake. And that's originally what I had done with uh. Who was that gentleman way back when? Um, Dave, David Heath. I met with him and he measured other cabins and said, here's how it'll be. And then he says, here's where you put it. He pretty much told me how it's going to go. His version was, he already thought city sewer would have been down there by now, but. That's, that's just saying.
Maybe Jay, would a. Building not attached on this map here, which has the eighty foot, seventy-five feet, sixty-nine feet.
Mm-hmm.
If a building wasn't attached, so that it's the entire thing was seventy-five feet from the. Lake itself. Would there be room to fit a building in with no closer to the wetland? And. Not sixty-eight or whatever that is at the garage?
Right, so there again, it would still require a variance, so only if the structure is attached to the existing dwelling or the existing garage. Are you allowed the two hundred square foot expansion? No closer to the water than the closest part of the existing structure for an area inside of seventy-five feet from the water, so. As determined by PACS inspection report, there's approximately a hundred and twenty square feet. That would be inside of seventy-five feet from the water, but no closer to the water than the closest part of the existing. If you were to detach it, A, you lose your two hundred square foot allowance. Uh, and B, you're still having to apply for what most likely is going to be a reduced right of way setback and a reduced wetland setback. To what those distances might be, we didn't lay that out. Um, they would be similar and you'd probably, yeah, they would be very similar.
Not gaining much by doing that.
This is what we thought was the best scenario.
I can reread the towns. Um. I guess the notes back in the record if you'd like. Um, the town had cited that there are unique property limitations due to the undeveloped town road on paper. Which the town would not develop due to that eighty percent of the road is through a county wetland. That there is no harm to public interest as the only usable part of the road access is on the applicant's property. That there is an unnecessary hardship due to the parcel size by only allowing expansion of the current structure. With a variance to the reduced road and wetland setbacks. They also said that the town of Bass Lake approval is dependent upon DNR approval. And from the DNR, they have no statutory jurisdiction for wetland setbacks that relies solely on the county.
If, if the town abandons that portion of that, that road?
They discussed that, I, I'd heard, I forget who it was, I think it was the planning committee chair, Bon Sutton. That had also mentioned that should we look at abandoning this road prior to. You know, approving or granting a variance, I said, well, that's ultimately a town decision. I know when road right of ways do dead end into navigable water, they can be really difficult to abandon at the state level. Because you basically need state approval and this one does technically go all the way to a, a navigable waterway. Um, I myself have walked this said access for duck hunting in the past. Um. Yeah, so I don't know if, if the town is really going to be able to abandon this, they can go through that process, but that's not something I generally would get involved with. Uh, you know, the town was, you know, pretty adamant that they're not going to develop this. Due to, well, A, it dead ends at Mr. Savitsky's property and in order to really. You know, further construct it or develop it, they would need wetland fill applications to the DNR because the, the rest of the right of way goes to the wetland.
Yeah, I was there.
We're the only ones that would ever use that road. If, if it was to be used.
But there's a dock there, who's dock?
Is this, is this dock yours or did the town put that one in there?
Um, that was mine.
Okay. That would be between Mr. Savitsky and the town, if the town wants them to remove it, that would be their purview.
They were using it to do water levels on the creeks, so it worked well for access. To the navigable part of the water there. So the dock was actually an, a plus, so to say.
All right, thank you. Any more questions to the applicant, I don't think so. I'm sorry, I'm here to make a motion.
I would make a motion to approve any question, as presented.
And you have to go through that three-step process, please, minimum.
Unique property limitations.
Yep.
There is no harm to the public interest. Um, and the unnecessary hardship is due to the parcel size. And we only opposed, um, extent. That would work.
I would second that motion. So Bass Lake had some good property limitations and. And so I mean, you could probably adopt those as, as ours, I mean, that probably wouldn't be a bad thing because I think. You want to go through those again.
Yeah, so it, when you go through the three-step test, it's, it's using reasoning and findings of facts to get to that, so. With unique property limitations. The town had cited that there's an undeveloped town road on paper or as platted, which the town would not develop due to eighty percent of the road being through a county wetland. Uh, that there is no harm to public interest as the only usable part of the road access is on the applicant's property. And the, there is unnecessary hardship due to the parcel size by only allowing expansion of the current structure with a variance to reduced road and wetland setbacks. So you gotta, when you go through the three-step, use finds the facts or reasoning as to how you determine that there is a unique physical limitation or that there is no harm to public interest. And that's really what the courts have been kind of hammering on is, yeah, okay, I understand that you, you said the three-step test, but how did you derive to that determination?
And it's not hard to come up with unique property limitations for specific properties and. And you, you've done property interest discussions in the past, so it's not hard to talk about that either. And then, like I said, whether there's unnecessary hardship, I mean, those have to be discussed on every single. Uh, application before we get to either an approval or denial. And, and like I said, we've had a couple of court cases and those have been, you know, if we don't do that specifically for each one. The court's going to throw it back or overturn it. Because that's what the laws, I mean, it's statutory.
Are we looking at the.
Yeah, you, you had made the motion, um, and it's, it's ultimately, I mean, do you want to add to your? Um, I guess, three-step test with findings of facts to support your conclusion? Or you could simply reference, you know, the, the town's uh, decision in their granting of a variance?
I think the facts that were presented and. And the staff report all, all outlined the reasons.
And they're already part of the record?
Correct. The facts are part of the record, the facts have been presented, we looked at the property, we understand the situation and. The town of Bass Lake certainly helped us with, with their determinations.
So I, I think to just be clear, I think if you say. On the, on your report. What um, specific limitations did you find? And you can adopt what you did, but I think it's got to be in the record that you're adopting what Jay found or something more.
Okay.
Can we just state? Um. As previously presented by the testimony. On the bass like.
No, well, you, you, I, I know you said it's complicated, no, I mean, the town of Bass Lake didn't make those proper findings. So I think you can, you can say, based on the same, uh, but I think you have to go through each element and say, just what the town said, you know, we have the town said as well.
All right, unique physical characteristics of the property prevent compliance with the ordinance, yes, they do, that was demonstrated by the evidence presented.
Okay, but again, that's a conclusion, I'm just saying, I'm not.
Okay.
But so.
I'm not making any more motions.
Because, and the town of Bass Lake did, I mean, they talked about limitations, they, there's an undeveloped town road.
Correct.
And there is a lot, um, you know, that we're not getting any closer to what we were before, but that was the county's, oh, so. You should reiterate what they say, to be clear.
Okay. So basically what you're asking me TJ then is to simply repeat what the towns thinks were, if that's what we're basing our determination on, yes, okay. Um. Physical characteristics per the town's recommendation or findings, there are unique property limitations, undeveloped town road on paper. Which the town would not develop due that eighty percent of the road is through county wetland. Um, no harm to public interests, um, as stated by the town of Bass Lake. As only the usable part of road accesses on applicant's property. Number three, unnecessary hardship is due to the parcel size. By only allowing expansion of the current structure with a variance to road and wetland setbacks. That was also demonstrated by all of the. That was also demonstrated by all of the, um, the determining factors as to how close wetlands were versus how close it would be. To the lake.
You know, Steve, has to. Make a motion to accept that amended motion or make a second to.
I would second that motion as she presented.
As amended.
As amended.
Alright. Are we good in the legalese department? We're trying really hard to say yes. Alright, um, everybody understand the motion as presented? Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented and then amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All post same sign, let the record reflect the motion passes by vote of five to zero.
Alright, for the second variance cases, the public hearing, the town of Brown Lake variance number twenty-three dash zero zero six. Owner, uh, owner Barbara Betts and J T Mullen, part of government lot five, lot one of C S M number one four seven eight. Uh, that's tax I D two, three, nine, nine, one. It is one point five four total acres on residential recreational one. Application is requested for the construction of a ten and a half by fifteen foot attached bathroom and entryway addition. Including a ten and a half by four and a half covered porch. Onto an existing principal structure located twenty-six feet at the closest point of the ordinary high watermark of Moose Lake. The proposed expansion would be at fifty point five feet to the ordinary high watermark. Variance is requested as section six point one of the Sawyer County zoning shoreline wetland protection ordinance. Which would require the prior granting of a variance for any new structures located closer than seventy-five feet to the ordinary high watermark. With no other exempt structures or reduced setback provisions allowed. Uh, as part of my staff report. Um, this, uh, existing principal structure is an existing non-conforming structure. The main purpose of the request is to hook up pressurized water to the structure and add a bathroom and entryway onto the existing historic cabin. Currently, the property only has a separate composting toilet area in an existing shed beyond the required setback. A previous variance was granted in twenty twenty for this property. And was approved by a four, uh, approved for a fourteen foot by ten foot addition, but has since expired. The applicants are now requesting for a slightly larger sized addition than what was previously approved. But as per the last approval process, uh, it was approved to a different size than what the, uh, applicant had initially requested. The previous request was for a ten foot by twenty-two foot. Uh, and that was changed by B O A to only allow for a fourteen foot by ten foot addition. Uh, the Sawyer County, uh, zoning shoreline wetland protection ordinance section, uh, section six point one. In conjunction with N R one fifteen point oh five parent one parent B. Requires a seventy-five foot setback from the ordinary high watermark of navigable water to the nearest part of a building or structure. The existing structure based on current setbacks would not be eligible for any other type of exempt structure provisions. That would include that two hundred square foot lateral expansion. In that, you know, getting the two hundred square foot lateral expansion. Uh, the existing principal structure needs to be a minimum of thirty-five feet from the ordinary high watermark. Um, in, in other words, if the existing structure was located, uh, nine feet further back from the water. Uh, the applicant, uh, could add the proposed two hundred square foot expansion, no variance would be needed. Um. With the, uh, uh, attached inspection report as part of my onsite, um. There's been no changes to the property since the previous onsite in twenty twenty. The existing cabin is approximately four hundred and ninety-six square feet. Uh, it should also be noted that the buffer zone area of, uh, natural near water vegetation is in excellent condition on this property. And the view corridor is minimal, um, even based off the current allowed state standards for corridor widths. Uh, as per the motion of the town board. Uh, motion was approved, Ralph Hanson chairman, Kay Wilson supervisor. Daniel Palmer supervisor, James Strandlin supervisor, Donald Stover supervisor. Town board approved based on three step rule provided by Sawyer County zoning. Signed Kathy McCoy, town clerk. Uh, there were. Seven additional notification letters sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject variance request. Zero, um, letters were received back with no additional comments. As part of the. D N R's information, dear board members, the Department of Natural Resources has received the notice of the public hearing concerning the variance request submitted by James Mullen and Barbara Betts. The department is writing in the response to the county board of appeals requests for an opinion from the department. As allowed by law, please have this letter and read into record for the B O A. For the information provided by the applicant, the department does not believe the applicant can demonstrate meeting the three statutory criteria for granting a variance. The Snyder versus Waukesha County zoning board of adjustments decision made it clear. A circumstance or desire of the applicant is not a factor to be considered when deciding variances. Further, the state versus Winnebago County decision established that economic loss or financial hardship do not justify a variance. As their board reviews these variance requests, please keep in mind that the applicant has the burden of providing that their request meets all the statutory requirements. For granting of a variance for each variance request. That is, that an applicant must prove that they are willing, that they will suffer unnecessary hardship. If the provision in the county's shoreline zoning ordinances are literally enforced. The Wisconsin Supreme Court has made it clear that the proof of unnecessary hardship by itself does not entitle an applicant to a variance. All three statutory variance criteria must be satisfied in order to grant a variance. It may be possible that the applicant will provide additional evidence at the hearing, which may change the conclusions listed below. Unique physical limitations. The applicant must demonstrate that unique physical limitations, wetlands, steep slopes, streams, rock outcroppings, or special conditions of the property exist. That prevent compliance with ordinance regulations. The physical limitations must be unique to the property in question and not generally shared by other properties in the area. Many of the neighboring lots appear with similar in nature to the applicants. When determining if compliance is prevented, the whole parcel must be considered. There is compliant location on this property where new construction can meet the required seventy-five foot setback. This location, uh, does not have to be adjacent to existing structures. No harm to public interest, the applicant must demonstrate that the variance will not result in harm or be contrary to public interest. The board must consider the impacts of the proposed project as well as the cumulative impacts of similar projects in the interest of the neighbors. Community and the general public. These interests are listed in the purpose statement of the ordinance and for shoreline zoning. Include protection of public health, safety, welfare, maintenance of clean water, protection of fish and wildlife habitat. And preservation of natural scenic beauty. The applicant has provided no information in the variance application to meet the standard. Unnecessary hardship, the applicant must demonstrate that if the variance is not granted, an unnecessary hardship exists. The applicant may not claim unnecessary hardship because of conditions which are self-imposed or created by prior owner. For example, building a home in compliance and then subsequently constructing a deck without a permit. Courts have determined that economic or financial hardship does not justify a variance. When determining whether an unnecessary hardship exists, the board must consider the property as a whole rather than just a portion of the parcel. The property owner bears the burden of providing unnecessary hardship. The existing structure is partially located within the vegetated buffer zone. The code was written to allow lateral expansion to those structures that were at least thirty-five feet to the ordinary high watermark. In other words, those were the non-conforming structures that had the opportunity to put on bathrooms, utility rooms, et cetera. The structure and composting toilet can be continued to be used or the structure could be relocated to a compliant location. And the addition would then not be restricted in size. Should the applicant provide testimony at the hearing meeting all the criteria, the previous variance should be taken into consideration. And that when granting a variance, minimum relief is to be granted. Please note that these comments are in regard to shoreline zoning regulations only, do not affect applicable erosion control, waterway permits, floodplain zoning. Or other department regulations, it is a responsibility of the B O A to assure that the statutory standards for granting of a variance are met. The standards help to ensure public, protection of public interest, including the preservation of water quality. Uh, fish and wildlife habitat along lakes and rivers. Wisconsin's navigable waters are held in trust for all people to enjoy. The shoreline setback is important to protect water quality, natural scenic beauty and the fish and wildlife habitats of Wisconsin waterways. The department appreciates your comments or your commitment to, to Sawyer County water resources and protection of public interest. Signed Kate Lettsi for the Department of Natural Resources. That is all.
Okay. Is, uh, Mullen or Betts here or someone to speak on their behalf? Alright.
I'm Terry Mullen and I'm being joined by my wife via web, Barbara Betts.
I'm here.
Well, as laid out, uh, we have a small cabin on Moose Lake. That, uh, was built at the turn of the century. Probably one of the oldest pieces of, or buildings on Moose Lake. Uh, and, um, we bought it in two thousand eight. Um. Looked at a lot of properties throughout the, the Sawyer County area. Um, when we saw this cabin, there was no question in our mind that this was where we wanted to have a cabin. Uh, because of the uniqueness of this building. Uh, and like many emotional purchases, we were at the time. The, the fact that there was not running water or, uh, a flush toilet in our cabin. Was something that we were willing to forego. Since that time, um, it, it's, uh, become a burden, um, uh. To have to exit the cabin anytime we need to use the bathroom and obviously this is more difficult. Uh, at night, um. And as one ages. And so we ask that we be allowed to, um, build this small. Um, basically just, uh, an attachment that would have a mudroom and then, uh, uh, a, a bath, a. A bathroom, a plumbed bathroom. Um, and, uh. And we have contacted, we, we're, we're in discussions with a contractor who, uh, was born and raised on Moose Lake. He's built several cabins, uh, he's been, he's seen our cabin for his whole life. He's, um. Very excited about the project and is, it, it, and is insisting that. It, it were we to be able to do it, um, it would, he, he would do everything he can to make it look. Uh, conform to the way the, uh, the, the current construction. Any questions or?
Uh, not, not right now, um, but, um, we, we may ask later, um. Barbara, did you have anything to add?
Uh, I think he covered everything.
I do have one thing to add, I'm not sure, uh, Jay, that you included that we've, we've subsequently, um, put in a, a, a septic field. But it's not, uh, hooked up to anything at this point.
Okay, um, have to go through the proper motions here, is there anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition of the application? Right, discussion by the board, um. Mr. Mullins, why, uh, there was a. An approval of an addition previously and now you're back making it bigger? Is that correct? Am I following the timeline correctly here?
To an extent, so this was a little bit unique and when they had initially come in for a variance request in twenty twenty. Their initial request was for a ten by twenty-two. Um, that was then amended at the B O A. And amended down to a fourteen by ten. Um, in discussions with the applicant out of B O A at that point. When B O A made that amendment to fourteen by ten. They hadn't talked with the contractor as to how that's physically going to work and they, they had some issues with trying to fit that fourteen by ten in there. I mean, yes, it's great to have the square footage, but as to how that motion was, uh, initially made. It was to be with the, the solid walled line of the back of the cabin as to not be viewed from the side. So there was some interesting dilemmas that were made because when they initially talked to their contractor, the twenty-two by ten was really kind of. You know, what would fit with how that existing historic cabin was laid out. Uh, so now the request you have in front of you is really for a nineteen and a half by ten and a half foot addition. The initial one was approved though for a fourteen by ten and the applicant can, you know, ascertain more as to why that request is changed.
The request today is. In rough numbers, five feet more than what was previously amended?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And the. That five feet that, there wouldn't have been enough room for a, a commode for you to have your knees. They, they would have been against the wall if, if we had conformed to that, that, that smaller size. So we just made it just big enough so that we could have a proper bathroom. Without going any larger.
Um, one of the statements that, uh, we heard from the D N R's letter or reply. Um, was that there, there is existing locations on the property where, uh. Compliant, if that's the right word, structure can be built with all the proper setbacks without adding on, putting addition onto this, um, this. Four hundred and ninety-six foot square cabin.
That, that is correct, and in fact, the way that the cabin was originally, um, marketed was. Live here while you build your dream cabin. Um, we bought the cabin and realized that this was our dream cabin. Um, it, it is a unique property, it's, it's, um, unlike anything we've ever been in, seen, uh, except in. A museum.
Have you investigated, is this, is your site large enough to split into two lake shore parcels?
Um, I can't answer that, I don't know.
It is, it appears it would be. My concern is you, you get a substandard setback and you. Give a variance that's now larger and make this an improved property. And then next year, now there's a new house being built. Uh, when there's an alternative right now, that's very viable. Have you considered the addition going the opposite direction so it's not beyond the existing structure? Within that fifty and a half feet, so that, uh, where's, I don't know where north is here, but I guess that on the south side. It appears that your porch is extending beyond the existing cabin line. If you pushed it the other direction, so it was in line, um. You'd be further from the water with that addition, is, is there?
I'm not sure I understand the, the, the way, what our plan is. The, the door that you see is more or less, uh, facing, um, west. And west is the only direction that we could go to, to move away from the lake. Any other direction would be toward the.
The lake is, is east, so in this, and I, I should mention that my staff report doesn't mirror exactly with how the request is. I, I have it shown as this ten and a half by nineteen and a half. This actually slides over and lines up with this area here, so it actually slides over, which I'm assuming is that additional four feet. Um, so the request is actually as how the applicants have it proposed on, on their sheet here. You know what that, that set or that step back distance is right here on the cabin? You can see the mouse.
I think it's about thirty, it, it's either thirty-two or thirty-six inches.
Yeah, so about three, three foot, um, kind of, so it'll protrude off the back there and additional. You know, three or so feet further towards the north. So the only part you're seeing then, from the lake off the south is again about that same distance, that about three feet here towards the south. The lake being here towards the east.
Steve, is that what you're asking?
It is, because I was looking at, at the, this map, which is, has the additions. Outboard the open yard on the right of the cabin, whereas that shows that this addition would actually be.
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Betts had brought that to my attention and, and I do apologize, I, I do want to make that reference that it, it is as per how the applicants have it presented here. Same dimension, same setbacks, but it does slide a little bit further north.
The, the doorway swing and, uh, I assume that's a covered entry porch?
Yes.
Could that not be on the fifteen foot side entering from the back, therefore you're not coming anywhere beyond the wall of the cabin and. Within close proximity of the lake. within close proximity of the lake.
Uh, we considered that uh we have some issues. There's a, our well is not far from that wall, that fifteen foot wall there. And uh, there's a hill and so it, it's, it, it seemed to make more sense to have it on the ten and a half foot side. One of the reasons we made it larger was we're trying to, with the, the width of the walls, the, the depth of the walls, it, we also realized that the um sizes of the bathroom started to get quite a bit smaller. And so we wanted to have a little more wiggle room in terms of making sure we had enough room in that bathroom.
When you guys are discussing this, I mean, you should discuss it with the three-step process um in mind and, and you kind of go one, two, three, and if you don't get one, you don't move to two. If you don't, I mean, if you get two, then you move to three, but um, you know, the DNR made a, a compelling argument and it's hard to, you know, you have to overcome kind of what they said because they made some um, identified some issues that I think was regards to what, what are the unique property limitations on this property? And, and I think that's the first and foremost thing that you have to deal with and and I think you can, you can ask the, the Z A if he has, if, if he sees anything like that or, or not.
Well, and again, I mean, ultimately the, the burden of proof for the three-step test is and relies on the applicant. Um, so I guess, you know, that would be where, you know, this board, you know, could certainly ask the applicants, you know, what do you feel is your unique property limitation? You, you do have the responses that, you know, they had submitted back. Um, but you know, some of those, you know, for, for at least the unique property limitation, um, they say yes, because of its age, it is a historic cabin, which, you know, the likelihood of it being moved to a different location is probably zero. Um, you know, but, but these are again, you know, part of that three-step test that the applicant needs to provide. Now, certainly this board can ask the applicant is, okay, what is your unique physical limitation? Uh, but that burden of proof is on you as the applicant to describe and go through that three-step test. You know, why would there not be, you know, harm to public interest? Uh, you know, we're putting this in a location that would be, you know, further away from, from the water. Um, that other structures would be allowed a two hundred square foot expansion if our cabin was an additional nine feet further back. Um, you know, those are, you know, the aspects of no harm to public interest, unnecessary hardship. Um, I, I do believe that probably would be as an unnecessary hardship that there is no interior plumbing um within the existing cabin. I, I would think that that would be a hardship, but uh, again, I mean, those, those are things that the applicant needs to provide as, you know, to evidence to this board.
Um, can a new compliant structure be built in this old cabin remain?
More than likely, yes. They could split the lot and build a new dwelling that would meet all compliant setbacks. And then this would be a separate dwelling on its own separate lot.
But that's, it would have, there couldn't be two, two dwellings on the same.
Correct. Um, but again, this lot does have lot area and configurations to legally split it into two separate lots, a vacant lot where a new dwelling could be built and then the lot containing the existing garage and existing cabin and existing composting toilet shed.
Okay, good. Let me rephrase. Can the current owners build without dividing the lot, build a compliant structure and leave this old cabin exactly as it is?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm, excuse me, I'm just curious why, why that is?
Why what is?
What, why um, what, what factors make it so that you can't um, why you would have to divide the lot?
Because this would be viewed as a dwelling unit and you would only be allowed one dwelling unit per lot. So in order to place an additional dwelling unit, you would and be required to split the lot into two legal parcels or two legal lots.
Okay, I understand.
But the chairman had asked, without splitting the lot, could another dwelling be built and leave the historic, uh, historic cabin? That answer is no, because at that point, then you would have two dwelling units on one lot and that would not be in accordance.
Okay.
Jay, could that technically not have, be mandated not to have a bed, kitchen and, and be just a wreck building?
It, it could. Um, you would have to remove all kitchen facilities and you would not be able to have any beds or bedrooms within that structure. There is a conversion document that would allow you to convert that to an accessory use only. I don't like using that document that was created by a previous zoning administrator that we still have available. Uh, because we find out a lot of times that, that documents is only as good as the person that's signing it and then potentially new owner opens up or, you know, moves in here and they're wanting grandkids to, to sleep in that structure. Well, the document is an affidavit that's recorded on the deed states that no, that is specifically to be used as an accessory structure only. You can have it as a, as a game room or, or something like that, but fish, right, but it, it's not to contain kitchen facilities and or sleeping areas, including beds.
And legally, you could still have vertical expansion. Now, you may not want to do that to an old cabin and maybe the bone stone hold that, but that's obviously allowable without a variance.
Correct. You, you could wreck and rebuild and replace within the existing footprint and vertically expand up to thirty-five feet in height. Now, that may look like a very odd shaped cabin in that it's really only four hundred and ninety-six square feet to begin with.
Certainly need to wreck if it, if it could hold the second.
Correct. Yeah, you don't have to. Just to the extent you could go, I mean, you could completely remove the structure in its entirety and replace in the same footprint. But yes, you could also, if you couldn't somehow sister boards together, I, I just don't see that you're going to be able to, to add on to the existing in, in this case at all, but for vertical expansion, that is.
So, uh, sir, madam, um, referring back to the department's letter about um adequate space exists for the construction of a compliant dwelling. What, what's the hardship? Loss of a historic cabin, is that the hardship?
Yes.
I, I didn't mean to put words in my mouth, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's, it's a, it's a piece of Biscatian history.
I agree.
And from a legal standpoint, um, it's, it's not necessarily a building limitation, it's, it's property limitation. So it's land that, that's, you know, so I think you have to come up with some property limitations that would prevent.
Um, the applicant would have to come up with property limitation.
Yep.
Well, and I'll just make the, the kind of the, the distinction there. So the unnecessary hardship, the applicant as part of their uh required documentation to provide, the unnecessary hardship was not having interior plumbing uh as that presents a hardship. And I, I don't, I would think that that would meet classification of a hardship. But it's the unique property limitations um, which the applicant had answered, at least in their, their information provided uh was the historic nature of, of the cabin. Uh, because of its age, the cabin being closer to, uh, closer than is currently allowed, the area contains the footprint for the addition is only a piece of property that is away from the lake, the, the, the side furthest away from the lake. So two different of the three criteria, which we have to go through those steps.
I think the building is unique. I'm not so sure the land is.
And I mean, statutorily, what it, I mean, it says, you know, in all circumstances, the property owner bears the burden of providing that an unnecessary hardship is based on conditions unique to the property rather than considerations personal to the property owner and that the unnecessary hardship was not created by the property owner, which I don't think he created, obviously.
Was there a reason that the last approval for a variance was not acted upon?
Apparently there was a um, uh, a bylaw that because we had to amend the plan uh a, a third time that we weren't, that whatever the bylaw was, you weren't allowed to re, uh, come back for two years. So that's why we're here now. Jay, I think that's.
Yeah, so ultimately it couldn't be reconsidered because initially in two thousand twenty, when the size was reduced, the applicants were hoping that we would reconsider this case the previous or the next month. There's nothing in the provisions of the bylaw that allow for reconsideration unless a reconsideration is made by motion at that same hearing. Um, the applicants then would have to wait one year in order to reply for the variance. Uh, with the approval of the two thousand twenty variance, though, it had a two-year timeline conditioned upon it by Mr. Olson, Mark Olson at that point. And the applicant had not um proceeded to take out a land use permit to build the approved fourteen by ten addition from that two thousand twenty variance.
So that could have been built on, had the.
Yes, this, this board had approved a fourteen by ten addition in two thousand twenty.
We were told that um, the cabin had to be in line with the existing building walls. And we just couldn't see how we could get a bathroom because of where the front door is now located. We didn't see that there was room, enough width for us to um have a bathroom on that end of the uh, the north side. And also we were having a problem finding um, a builder to call us back.
Um, as per the variance twenty dash zero, zero, two, motion by Kelsey to approve a fourteen by ten addition in line with the existing walls to keep the buffer intact with mitigation and with a two-year timeframe to apply for a land use permit application. Uh, so at that point, when a land use permit application was not applied for within two years, the variance had uh sunsetted.
Uh huh, correct. I, I, we weren't actually aware of the specifics of what you just said, but that is what happened.
Looking at this, the bathroom appears to be a little over five feet wide from the opening to the back of this sink. So that mudroom or whatever you want to call it, entryway is close to ten feet or nine feet.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, yeah, nine, nine feet something, right?
Can this committee issue a a restriction on that lot that it cannot be divided?
I, I would suggest not doing that. Um, I don't, I would probably default to legal counsel at that point, but um you're probably going above and beyond because it, it can, um, but I don't know.
And even if you do that, um, or try to do that, I mean, you still have to meet the three-step requirement. And I don't know how you get there. Um, and that's the problem.
But when we get past this application, uh, I'm, I'm going to have some questions about that three-step test that after they can help us with. Um, boy. Preserving that um, that really, really unique structure is a that I certainly respect and appreciate your efforts to do that. Um, our hands are kind of tied here. I think folks, um, as hardship justification, uh, the code is unnecessarily burdensome and the landowner cannot enable permitted use without relaxation and they can't. Um, and as we heard counsel say earlier, if they don't pass the first test, how do you go to the second test and the third test? And then the second part of that is uh, there are unique limitations on the property that prevent the owner, landowner from needing required dimensional setbacks. There are not. Again, with all respect, they sure, I would love to own that cabin. I wish it was on my property, which is more compliant, but um, uh, it's really neat, really neat. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to deny the request of the applicant uh based on evidence that's presented specifically um that the dimensions of the existing property would allow for compliant um, for the construction of a, of a compliant structure. That will be on that.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, does everybody understand the motion? And is there a second to it? Also, the second by Gordy, uh, discussion on the motion? Do we have to say that the, the findings affect us at this point or have we done that already?
Well, I think you said that they don't, can't meet the three-step process and that's fine.
Okay. All right, I'll call for a vote. All was in favor of the motion that presented, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Of both same sign. Motion denied, passed by a vote of five zero. Thanks for coming in. So, moving on to new business. Right?
Uh, yeah.
Or do we have something else?
No, we, we have uh kind of two aspects of new business. The first is that within your packets, we did hand out the twenty twenty-four dates. We will have that as an agenda item for October for action or discussion action on approval of those dates. So uh, this is your homework to take that uh sheet home and make sure that there's no other conflicts. Do you have that sheet? I thought there was one where there's county board and BOA on the same night. Um, yeah, so for April, um, generally we always have Board of Appeals the third Tuesday of the month. Well, April, because of the special election things or whatever it is, I always forget, but they always change county board date uh in April. So I would not be, potentially not be available for one or the other. We may not have BOA. I mean, it may not need to report to county board. Uh, it's up to this committee if you want to have me present. Otherwise, I would designate Pat Brown to be present if we have uh, a case there and I have to be disposed at county board. We most likely will also not be in this room for that meeting. We'll probably get bumped and probably go back to the assembly room.
I, I don't have a problem with Pat Brown not being here. So if there is a duplicate date for scheduling. So if there is a duplicate date for scheduling, hate them.
Uh, yeah, and then the other one that we always look for earmark is November for gundear season. We do have that laid out as the second Tuesday. Of the month, and that would also be, as it looks like right now, county board's date for their meeting as well. So if you don't have any, you know, issues with it, again, we'd be looking for discussion, action to approve the dates as presented, so. In October, correct. So take it home, look at it. If, you know, if we want to move ours to, you know, the second Thursday of November, you know, that's another option. Just take a look at what you have on there. Actually, no, here that I'm looking.
I think it's, we're scheduled for the.
Yeah, we're, for November, we're scheduled for, for the 19th. You're right, I have this wrong. And that 19th would still be before gundear season, November, gundear season for 2024 is late. So I don't, I don't see any issues with that. For, for November's, really, it would just be April's, but if.
But we vote to.
In October.
So that was the first agenda item under.
For new business, yeah, and the other one is kind of update on the skull variance. So the skull variance was appealed. To Circuit Court by the town of Round Lake. You had heard that case last month or two months ago. They appealed it to Circuit Court. The skulls had then. Sent me an email asking for a withdrawal of the variance application and that they didn't want to, and I could read it verbatim, but. Summarizing, they didn't want to waste taxpayer dollars to have to go through a circuit court decision. So they requested a withdrawal. There is nothing really within our bylaws that allows for withdrawal after a motion has been made. So this board can't just say, yep, we'll withdraw or accept the withdrawal. So that's where I'm going to turn it over to legal counsel because he had a suggestion as to how to process that.
So the attorney that filed the appeal for sound around Lake. I, I shared with her the, the letter from skulls. And, and my suggestion was that we do a stipulation to agree to the court to reverse the decision. Based on a stipulation of the parties, which obviously the county doesn't have an objection. Brown Lake was asking for it to be reversed. And the applicant said they wanted to withdraw that request. So the stipulation is being circulated and signed. And it will be submitted to the court. So the court will overturn it. And that's the only. Method I know of because there's no provision for someone to come back into this committee. Or the Board of Appeals and say, oh, I withdraw my application after you approved it. Maybe we could add something to the bylaws that allows them to do that, but at this point in time, there's nothing there that would allow that.
Which theoretically could easily happen, you know.
Right.
I decided to sell the property and not put an addition on and.
Right, but I guess once the, once the appeal's been filed. Now it's the purview of the court and it makes sense that we stipulate and just have the court sign a stipulation to reverse it and overturn or. I don't know, but it's not even a, we're not, we're basing it on the applicant's withdrawal. And basically, nothing else. And so that's good. That'll be, I think the, the signatures are on that or closed on that and we'll.
Yep, so I have the original, the, the applicants had signed the stipulation. I have it in my office and I sent you a virtual copy, but I. After this meeting, let's run down there. I'll give you the original then.
Yep. And, and the other thing I was going to say, just so, I think going forward, I'm going to work with Jay and we'll come up with a worksheet. For every variance. So you have to go, one, we have to find this. And maybe give some examples of things you have to find if there's a limitation of the property, you know. With regards to whether there is, it's in the public interest to grant the variance. And whether there is an undue hardship out there as well, so that each one, we go through the process and come to the conclusion that. You know, hopefully is not appealable to this record.
We would have some sort of a responsibility also to the applicants to, to advise them beforehand that this is what, this is how we're going to be looking at it. So. They should be prepared for each of those steps with viable.
It's, it's in their packet. I mean, so they, but I, but I agree that what we'll do is, I don't think there's an issue with sharing with them our worksheet. That says, look, this is what we got to do first. This is what's second, this is what's third. And if you can't show to this Board of Appeals, any of these items, we can't grant you variance.
Well, any or all?
Well, any, any of them. Well, any way along the process, you stop. So you have to show, you have to prove them all, but yeah. First one, but any, if you can't prove any of them, if you hit two and not one, it fails. So it's all of them. You're right, but.
I think Laura is suggesting that they be aware of that.
Right.
And it is in their packet. I get that, but it.
I think I'll highlight it more. Right, I, I think I'll, you know, especially highlight that, that three-step test and kind of use some of the language that. Other Circuit Court cases have come out with, which, you know, somewhat with the DNR kind of always references in theirs. In that, that burden of proof is on the applicant to provide that, you know, what is your unique property limitation? What is your no harm or why is there no harm to public interest? And what is your unique hardship or unnecessary hardship?
And actually, in this situation, I mean, I think it from a. You know, it's, it's a really cool structure and they really should have a bathroom in it. But the lot is so big that you can't find a unique limitation on the property. And then you, you discuss that. So, and if you can't. It's, it's impossible to grant the variance because the lot's big enough to, to build new or. Move the cabin back. And obviously, you can't move an old cabin like that back, but it's a big lot. If it was a little tiny slimmer of a lot and there was no place else to build. Now there's unique property limitations.
Yep. I mean, I, I'm guilty of failing to even consider that last time. I didn't look left and look at the map that.
Well, I don't recall hearing that, that statement from the Department of Natural Resources last time that decided, you know.
Well, I don't, I think there was a unique property limitation for, for skulls and that, you know, they were kind of pinched between a wetland and everything, but they didn't really provide the burden of proof as to. You know, what was their unnecessary hardship to have a three-stall, two-story garage?
And they had a reasonable use.
Right.
Right. But I think, yeah, we'll, we'll make it easier for you guys to go through that process. And so you know it's one, two, three.
A, a couple of points. This was the, the appeal. And did you guys get copies of this? No? Don't you think they should?
I guess during.
I'll ask you that.
They serve you, you, you surely can share with them.
Okay, so I contacted the office and asked, and you hadn't even.
No, and I still don't have it. I got an electronic copy from you. I never got, I don't get served on those because it goes.
So, I think I, I just got online and opted into the case and then got a copy. Because I didn't, you're the only that served.
So if you, if you wouldn't have done that on your own.
Yep.
What the hell would you have known?
Well, hopefully, if you, someone would have told.
Yeah, that's an interesting process.
So can, expectations to respond to that. So as soon as you're served ever, I mean, you got to get a copy to Jay. And, and so that, and I think, could you share it with the, with the.
I, I, I think I asked Jay if he had a copy of it, then if you want me to run mine up.
Right, and at that same time, you were able to find it.
As a.
But once I know that I got a copy.
As, as a point of order, I think that whenever the chairman gets served, everybody should be made aware.
It will serve everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Well, the guy. He went, he kind of gave me hell when he pulled in the yard. He said, I tried to serve you four times, but it was always the trip of foliage and you were never there. And I said, that's because I live here. And he didn't know where that's, I don't, I don't know what was going to happen if he failed, if he kept failing, but.
He couldn't find it at the lake?
No. It means I gotta spend more time at the lake.
Right, so I will distribute that Circuit Court case to the other board members then. Ultimately.
Well, this one is mute.
It is.
So, but in, in the future.
Sure.
If that could, if that could happen. And then. It was very telling, this, the town's attorney is, was a gal named Linda Coleman. From Ashland, I believe. They would obviously be able to wash the, oh, okay. Very, very thorough, just picked us apart on everything that we didn't do correctly. And it really is going to change the way we have to do business, but it doesn't seem. To me, anyway, and I'm biased, but it, the way it's handled is, isn't fair. You know, when, when the town turned it down, they said because it was of harm to public interest. Didn't say what the harm was or to who, just public interest. Well, in our findings, we said there was no harm to public interest. Well, in the appeal, seven or eight times, she says that we did not prove that it wasn't a harm. They didn't prove it was, but we didn't prove it wasn't.
But, but you understand that everything that's, that we say has to come from the applicant. And if they don't prove it to us. You know, you can, you know, extrapolate from what they say to come up with some other things, but, but it's not beholden upon the applicant.
The burden of proof.
Yes, it's all on them. And, and, you know, we're not supposed to, you know, be pulling it out of them. They're supposed to provide you with the information sufficient for you to do all that stuff.
That's why I think in the preliminary stages, they are thoroughly aware of what that means.
Right, and I think sometimes in the past. What we relied on more so than not was common sense. It makes common sense that this should be approved, but that just will not hold water ever.
There's a whole lot here. And, you know, in, in our discussion and testimony and of, of that particular, this particular request. Statements were made that. The previous variance was for nine feet closer to the wetland. And this applicant sought two feet. And so we approved or two feet closer, seven feet. And we also said that with catch basin. And we. I don't know if we specifically said it, or we certainly implied that seven feet with a catch basin was better than nine feet without. And that didn't hold any water.
Well.
But and then, and then, let, let me finish it and not to interrupt you, TJ, but, and then Jay, they used some of your statements against you, you know, when you, when you. I shouldn't say you, they, they brought out your statement that you said there was a compliant area that, but it wasn't aesthetically pleasing. Which, I don't know, maybe we got to be more careful.
Well, I said aesthetically pleasing and would take up where their existing drain field was located, and that is a unique physical.
That didn't come up in the.
No, they're going to pick out what they're, they're going to cherry pick what they want.
How, how they want to shoot us out of the water, but.
But now what you're learning is that if you want to approve areas, there's a certain manner for doing that. That's can't be appealed because everything's in the record. And, and.
They can always be appealed.
You, you should be, you should be able to, you know, withstand an appeal if you do it correctly.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that that one would not have been. Approved by you guys had it been. Argued properly, you know, by the applicant and provided you the information that they need. I think that's to your point that. We need to educate the applicants more that the burden's on them to prove this, this, and this. And if you don't think you could do that, for example, in this case, I mean, you have to be able to show this unique property limitation. Are you going to do that with a lot that can be divided into two lots and you could build? A home anywhere you want on this lot?
But, you know, again, that was one of the three things, but another to someone, to me, it would be, and if I didn't understand completely. It's definitely a hardship not having toilet.
Oh, without a doubt, but there's.
So you, you would say, okay, that's why unnecessary hardship.
Right, and I think that, that is a good one.
But that works, but that's only one of the elements. You can't get by the, the unique property limitations. And, and that's, and because from common sense standpoint, and I don't, I mean, would someone appeal it? I don't know, but from a common sense standpoint, doesn't it make sense that they get a bathroom? Yes. I mean, every one of them, they should have a bathroom. They should have a bathroom, but you can't meet the requirements. And if you can't meet the requirements, guess what? Put the bat, you know, you know, you can put the bathroom in the garage.
Well, they do have a bathroom. They have their little, there's a little shed back there that has the composting toilet in it.
My wife would never go near the door of that building.
No.
Did the new septic. Such that it could be utilized by a new building?
I, that I, I, I don't know. I'd have to look back at the records.
But the other thing I noticed in their appeal, and that's why I'd like all of our members to get copies of all of this stuff. Comes down the pike.
And I still will distribute it just so you can have some, you know, good reading materials for you.
They. She said there was no. Testimony from expert witnesses, and I'm paraphrasing here, that. Said there would not be erosion and there was no testimony from expert witness or no opinion from expert witness that it would not be harmful to wildlife, you know. When the hell did we have to start proving that?
Where do we have the time and the resources to put that in?
You know, I, after I read this thing, Steve, I was afraid that we're going to have to have you here every time. And, and then have a panel of experts behind us, you know, some guy taking gundear poop and another guy putting coat and lily pads and.
If you think about it, though, I think the applicant knows that. I bring my builder in, okay? And, and what's my builder going to do to mitigate erosion? And now your builder's your expert. Well, we're going to do this and that and this and that'll mitigate, you know, so you have testimony to that effect. And by the, by the applicant saying, we're going to have Joe Blow build it and. We're going to try to control erosion. I mean, he's not the expert. If you bring your builder in or the builder writes a letter and submits that to, to you guys. So. Again, they're providing you with that information. It's not beholden to you to, to come up with it. It's on them. And it's, that wouldn't be hard to do. I mean, your builder's going to provide that information to you. How are you going to keep erosion from going to the wetland? Builder, how are you going to do that? And I'm sure he could spend five minutes telling you how he's going to do that. So I don't think it's, it's not on us to come up with it.
Well.
You'll have to take it on fact.
Help us to prove that it, that it does.
No, but, but I mean, why is the burden on?
Well, the burden's on the applicant for the three-step test, but when it gets to an appeal level, you, you have to, you have to know that. That attorney that used that language against me and against this board, she was working for the other side as the plaintiff of the case, so. She's going to use any ammunition at her disposal to try and make the appeal be overturned. Now, I don't think, if the three-step test was made, right. That's just a turn.
And that may not have been a winning argument, but there are winning arguments in it. So that if we don't go through that three-step process, we'll lose every time.
Well, if the applicant doesn't bring us evidence on the three-step process.
Then you don't approve it.
Right.
Then they lose it. And some of this stuff, you know, we're not dealing with. Professionals, and I'll throw myself. I'm not a professional at this and.
No, but it's, it's not hard for someone to say. Go see an attorney. You know, this is, this is a very unique cabin. It's a very important thing to you. This variance is really important to you.
So Tom, when they say this historic cabin was a unique situation. If I forget how they.
Well, there's no hardship, what are they?
Can, as they're talking, do we have to wait and propose a call? We can't argue that and say in our, in my opinion.
Sure.
I don't feel that qualifies as a hardship.
That, that's your, that's your job. They have to argue something, but if, for example, if they came to me as a private attorney and said, I want to apply for a variance. I, I would say, you're not going to get this because there's not a unique property limitation. We can apply. But if they follow the three-step process, you cannot get a variance. And, and so some situations like this. You know, you're SOL. You know, and you, you, you may take that back half of the building and. You may go put a second story out and the bathroom's going to be upstairs and the bathroom's going to be downstairs and we'll put some living quarters upstairs. You don't need a variance for that.
I probably wish they'd have built in the last two years.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll definitely do my homework to provide the applicant additional highlighted language on their forms that they submit back. As to, you know, that that burden of proof is specifically on you as the applicant to meet these three-step tests and really using some of that comment language that the DNR has provided for the last few cases because. Yeah, I want to make sure that the, the applicants have their homework done too.
And if you look at your bylaws. They give you pretty good examples in the bylaws of, of what things you can, examples of what you can find, you know, for undue hardship, you know. Whether it's against the, the public interest or a policy and, and unique property limitations. And, you know. Property limitations, they talked about the size, there's slopes, there's whatever that prevents you from building compliantly.
So the first case tonight in defense of Laura's, you know, that was challenging how she was walking through it. Do you think we, that ended up presented adequately or do we have an open? Do you think we, that one ended up presented adequately or do we have an open?
I I think the town. Did a marginally okay job of of meeting the three steps and we followed that. Okay, could we have done more? Yes. Will we do more next time? Yes, but I think it was in 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 clearly the the step there was, I mean, it clearly was unique property. You know.
For discussion, how would we have done it better? Because I.
I know what she. But we're gonna, what I, you wait to see what we give you next time as a worksheet. It's not gonna have any but specific cases, but it's gonna be a worksheet you do for every case that comes up. And it's gonna make it easier for you.
I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um.
Could fill that out.
Yeah.
Before you get here and say, well, this is what I I.
Sure.
But I know you don't, you don't fill it up beforehand. You fill it out as they're presenting.
I understand that, but I mean, they could write their feelings that, you know, I think this or this.
Yep, yep.
Or using some of the other previously distributed applicant information as part of the three page worksheet that I'll be giving them.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know if everyone was here, uh. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, Jay said that.
Yep, that was the last thing.
TJ is gonna be present at all of our meetings or not.
And and sometimes that's, I'm sure that's not always good. I I interrupted, I shouldn't and, but I I guarantee.
I should say, you certainly gave me a little work.
Well, I'm sorry. But what I'm, what I'm saying is that with 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 the worksheet. I won't interrupt again. Because you have everything in front of you that you need to prove.
And those that weren't here as well, when I was talking with with Al and Laura, um, Andy Elbarado, the county administrator, had reached out to Lynn Markham at Clue. Uh, which is Center of Land Use Education, and they're trying to line up a training seminar for Board of Appeals members that will be hosted by Sawyer County. It'll be, uh, an invite to other Board of Appeals members in in other counties. As per conversations with Al, we are hopefully looking at October seventeenth. We'll see if Lynn's available. And then trying to mirror that with our next scheduled BOA meeting, whether that's before or after. We're somewhat at the mercy of Lynn. As to when she can meet those dates. A date has not been decided yet, but it would be as the weekend of the sixth or the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty third.
I would wager to bet that it's probably gonna be during the day. Because that's when she works.
Uh, Lynn had said back as of time of day, evenings are suggested because there's a better turnout in in Lynn's.
That's great.
In in Lynn's profession, so.
That makes sense that there would be. Most of us aren't working, but you like you two are, and so you have to take time out of your.
Oh, and and now that I'm reading, now that I'm reading further down, the week of the sixteenth, uh, works, except she is not available on Tuesday of that week. So.
And my thought would be is that the whole zoning office should be there too, because regardless of who takes an applicant. If it's not Jade. It's not Kathy. They 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 make sure they provide that information to whoever the applicant is.
Intention to make it mandatory.
Yeah, highly, highly suggested, um, because of some of the appeals that have been recently turned over to Circuit Court. It was ultimately Andy's decision to have legal counsel present. Um, and him also then reaching out to Lynn to provide additional training. I think that was also reiterated by the, um, county board chair, Tweed Schuman as well. So highly recommended.
Um, last question. I don't save any of this. It's all just.
And I, yeah.
It's all saved in the office.
Yeah, we have electronic copies of everything. We have a master file of the case and we have minutes for what, you know, Kathy is taking as well as the recording. So no, you you wouldn't really have to take. You wouldn't have to keep anything unless you had some additional notes that you wanted to reference in the unlikely case that something was to be.
I save them for a month in case there's an appeal.
Yeah, that's probably a good, yeah, that's probably a good way to to work, especially if you did have notes on it of some of some nature, so.
Okay, any other business? Linda, did you have a question or just observational? All right, thank you. Your motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Lots of motions to adjourn. All in favor, aye.